Good morning. Good morning, everyone. We're going to begin. This is a Committee of the Public Safety and we are going to have a very brisk but very quick hearing. The author of this bill has three witnesses and that's really good.
I'll try to be efficient. Not quantity.
So joining me is Councilwoman Blackwell to my right, Councilman O'Brien, the author of this resolution and bill, and Councilman Heenan. Will the clerk please read the title of the bill?
Bill number 15009, an ordinance amending Title 21 of the Philadelphia Code entitled "Miscellaneous" by establishing a policy of posting all missing and endangered person alerts on city websites, social media sites, all under certain terms and conditions.
Thank you very much, Councilman. We'd like you to have an open statement.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to read the statement because I'm given too hyperbole and sometimes I go off script and take too much time. So I'll just say good morning and thank everyone for being here for the hearing on bill number 15009. This bill will require the Philadelphia Police Department to work in collaboration with other city departments to post any public alert generated via the Missing Endangered Person Advisory System on all city maintained websites and social media sites. The bill's intent is to disseminate information through the alerts as quickly and as broadly as possible to support in the search and safe recovery of missing individuals. Pennsylvania's created the Missing Endangered Person Advisory System, or MEPAS. That is a missing person advisory that alerts citizens and law enforcement of a missing endangered person through established transmissions, broadcast, and other forms of public communication. It is separate from the Amber Alert System, which notifies the public about abducted children who are considered to be in imminent danger. A missing endangered person will be issued if the circumstances of the incident do not meet the criteria for the Amber Alert, the individual is missing under unexplained involuntary or suspicious circumstances, the person is thought to be in danger because of age, health, mental or physical disability, environment or weather conditions, or is known to be in the company of a potentially dangerous person. We're here today because of the tragic death of Christine Sankey. Christina was in her mid-30s. She had autism and a profound intellectual disability. She functioned more like a two-year-old requiring a one-on-one support aid. Christina was also nonverbal, so when her state-paid caretaker lost track of her in Macy's, Christina wasn't able to ask anyone for help. To my knowledge, MEPAS was never issued in Christina's case. Sadly, less than 24 hours later, after she was going missing, she was found dead, half naked, on a West Philadelphia street between two parked cars. How she got that far away from Macy's is a very difficult and challenging question. Missing and endangered person advisories are essential, are an essential mechanism to protecting our vulnerable adults like Christina, but for these alerts to be effective, they must be broadly disseminated. City departments' use of disseminating information via social media has proven to be very effective, especially as it pertains to information regarding public safety. Using social media to disseminate information not only ensures a broad reach, but is also cost-effective. Bill number 15009 is designed to ensure that once an alert is issued by many Philadelphians, many Philadelphians will see it and a tragedy like Christina's death might be avoided. I just have a personal observation. There's nothing that chills your heart and makes the hair stand up on the back of your neck than when you're a child, whether they have a developmental disability or they're neurotypical, and they're away from you for a split second and you don't know where they are. I had that one experience, and I'll say this in public, but at Franklin Mills, and I turned and I had my three boys and one of them was gone. And it just so happened a guy that I grew up with was a mall cop and he's on the Segway. And he goes, comes up to me, he wants to have a conversation. I said, "I don't have time. My kid's gone." He goes, "I know where he might be." He gets on the radio, tells everybody, "Go to the doors." And there was an area in the middle of the mall where they had a little first wheel and some other toys, and guess what? That's where he was. He just knew that from a prior experience, but your heart just goes in your throat. My two uncles had the beginning of Alzheimer's and on one occasion, my uncle was going to a dentist appointment around noon. It was almost 24 hours later, we didn't know where he was, and we tracked him to a gas station in New Jersey, and somehow he found his way back to Langhorne, to the Chaminde Mall. But I know from my association with law enforcement that as the hours get longer, the likelihood of a good result is diminished. I had another uncle that left his community and they didn't know he had Alzheimer's and he went out to get a pizza, he made a right turn, he kept going, and he ended up in Boston, Massachusetts. So adults with Alzheimer's, they get disoriented and they just keep going and they don't know how to find their way back. It's our responsibility to educate the public through instruments like this so that we are aware of vulnerable people. And I think we're all going to be vulnerable at some point, and we don't want to be burdensome, but this enables loved ones and caretakers to take these situations in hand and have as many eyes on a desperate situation as possible. So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
No, thank you, Councilman, for raising this issue. And the best part of this job is learning more and more about particular parts of our society and this particular cause. This particular bill has a great deal of significance for so many, so thank you. Councilwoman Blackwell?
Yes. I want to say to the sponsor of this bill, thank you as well, as well as the chairman. And it's so important, although for one of the youngsters, the woman who was just sentenced to 40 years, that was right in my neighborhood. We knew the youngster who had to wear a colostomy bag for months, five-year-old, after what she endured. And certainly, whenever we have issues, Lieutenant, it doesn't get any better than this, we're glad you're out here to testify, both of you, and I'm sure that was the first thing on your agenda that you wanted to do today. But we're grateful. Nothing could be more important and we're all judged by the way we treat our children, our seniors, and those vulnerable members. So this is so important and we're so happy to be here to support it. And thank you both for being here.
Thank you.
They're the best.
Yes, they are. Thank you. There's a term called tender age alert or something like that, maybe you'll touch on that. Whenever you get one of those, as Councilman O'Brien talked about, your hairs on the back of your neck just jump. Will the clerk please read the panel to testify?
Lieutenant John Stanford, Dr. Petra Kotziper, and Audrey Kachia.
Thank you very much. Please come up to the witness table. We can all come up. Pull your mics close to you, state your name for the record, and please begin your testimony. Good morning.
Good morning. Lieutenant John Stanford, Philadelphia Police Department.
Welcome.
Good morning, Chairman Jones and other members of the Committee on Public Safety. My name is Lieutenant John Stanford. I'm the commanding officer of the Philadelphia Police Department's Public Affairs Unit, and to help me answer any questions at the conclusion of my testimony, I also have Lieutenant John Walker from Southwest Detective Division here with me. First, on behalf of the Commissioner, thank you for allowing the Philadelphia Police Department to appear before you to testify on this piece of legislation. I would just note that this testimony is based on amendments worked out by the sponsor and the administration, and members should have received a copy of these amendments. The goal of bill number 15009 is for the public police department to work in cooperation with other city departments to endeavor to post any public alert generated by the Missing Endangered Persons Advisory System for all persons believed to be missing in Philadelphia on all city maintained websites and social media sites that routinely post advisories and other search alerts to aid in the search and recovery of those missing persons. As a commanding officer of Public Affairs Unit, I also oversee the department's website and all social media accounts run by the police department, and I'm pleased to report that the department, under the leadership of Commissioner Ramsey, has already been committed to publicizing this information with the goal of recovering all missing persons in Philadelphia, including endangered persons. For this reason, the police department fully supports bill 15009 as it is proposed to be amended. While the police department is already committed to locating missing persons in Philadelphia by using all resources, including the Internet, this bill demonstrates the commitment, compassion, and awareness of the bill's sponsor, Councilman O'Brien, and city council towards the children, elderly, and disabled persons of Philadelphia. So on behalf of Commissioner Ramsey, thank you. At this time, Lieutenant Walker and I would be happy to answer any questions regarding how missing persons are investigated or how my unit uses the Internet and social media to spread the message of missing persons in Philadelphia.
For your testimony? We're going to hear from the entire panel before we ask questions. Is that okay, gentlemen, ladies? Thank you.
Hello. Good morning. Good morning, Chairman Jones and members of the Public Safety Committee. I would like also to begin by thanking you for giving me the opportunity to testify. My name is Dr. Petra Kotziper and I am a licensed clinical psychologist here in Pennsylvania. I currently work at Friends Hospital, which is an inpatient facility up on the boulevard. I have plenty of experience working with individuals with dual diagnosis, mental health, mental retardation, now called intellectual disabilities, and substance abuse issues. Also have a background in the intellectual disabilities field where I started out here in the city in the nineties, and I've worked in academia for several years as well. And I'm currently affiliated with the Temple University Collaborative on Community Inclusion for People with Serious Mental Illnesses. I'm also here to support the bill number 15009, which calls for a policy of posting all missing and endangered persons' alerts on city websites and social media sites. I just want to give you a couple of examples of why I think this is a really important bill and why I'm here to support it. I'm going to just give you a description of a couple of populations this might apply to, in addition to individuals with dementias. I'm going to skip this part because I think you've already spoken to this. So obviously, individuals with dementia and Alzheimer's, which is one type of dementia, are highly at risk, especially in the middle and latter stages of those illnesses because there's a lot of disorganization, confusion, et cetera. Another group of individuals, which has also been mentioned by you, are individuals with intellectual disabilities, especially individuals who are at the lower functioning range of intellectual disabilities, who might be just limited in their verbal abilities or may have no verbal abilities whatsoever. I, when I started here in Philly in 1991, worked in a group home and I was responsible for three women. Philly is super progressive with their intellectual disability service system, so we do a lot of trips out in the community. If you are one person responsible for three individuals, that can be a lot sometimes to monitor. If one of these women would have wandered away from me, that could have had very significant consequences, as well as two of those women also were nonverbal and would have had no way to identify who they were, where they lived, or what they were doing in the community. A group that I'm currently very passionate about is actually individuals with serious mental illnesses who are experiencing acute exacerbations of their symptoms, specifically when they have psychotic disorders. And one type of those might be individuals with paranoid delusions, you see this featured a lot on television, but also individuals that are very disorganized. So schizophrenia is probably the most well-known disorder. So it can involve abnormalities in various symptom domains, hallucinations, delusions, disorganized thinking, et cetera. Of course, serious mental illnesses are episodic illnesses. People generally do well for long periods of time, if they're stabilized, going to treatment, whatnot. Individuals in Philly who have serious mental illnesses are serviced very differently than individuals with intellectual disabilities. They live in boarding homes with minimal supervision. For some individuals, that's absolutely fine; for others, it is not. So when not living with family members or completely independent, they often live in managed housing or boarding homes, and some of those individuals have different types of case management services. Many folks that would go missing from these residencies would not have to be reported, but some of them would have to be. So I'm going to give you an example of when I worked in Virginia. I'm a forensically trained psychologist, so I worked as a post-doc in a hospital in Virginia. And we had a young man come to our hospital who was extremely disorganized, had spent a very long time in the Virginia jail-prison system. It turned out subsequently that he had stopped taking his medications, he in Philly had wandered away from the home he was living in. How he made his way to Virginia is anybody's guess, but he then committed some kind of public nuisance crime, peeing in parks, whatnot, was eventually arrested, couldn't tell anybody who he was, and basically spent almost a year in the local jail system waiting for a bed in a state hospital. When he came to us, he was completely decompensated. Took a very long time for us to get him sort of back to even being able to tell us who he was. And luckily, I was from Philly, so I figured out what he was saying, what community provider he was mentioning. So I called him up and, you know, with his consent, and they're like, "Oh, my God, that's so-and-so. He went missing from our service system like a year ago." I'm like, "Well, awesome, he's in our state hospital." You would think that's an unusual occurrence, but it actually is not, and that is really pretty scary. If an alert had been maybe disseminated, back then, social media wasn't super prominent as it is now, somebody might have recognized this person, you know, at the bus stop or wherever. He might have been intercepted earlier, returned, and wouldn't have ended up on this odyssey of one year through all of these bizarre service systems, which certainly didn't have help with his mental health. Another case very close and dear to my heart is that of an older gentleman, that case is still going on right now, who came to our hospital, and I figured out pretty quickly that he had a history of service for intellectual disabilities in another state, so it wasn't registered in Philly. He'd also had fixed delusions and psychotic symptoms, and probably also had started having dementia as an older adult. After a previous inpatient admission to another hospital in the city, he was discharged to a boarding home. This is somebody with significant intellectual disabilities because the family could not take care of him any longer. He walked away from this boarding home promptly, walked up to a playground where he stated that he was this fictional character that he thought he was, which didn't go over very well because it looks kind of threatening and menacing. So of course, a concerned member of the public called the police. When he gets confronted, he can be agitated, so of course, he got into scuffle with the police. He was arrested, ended up in isolation in the jail for three weeks, where he decompensated even further, and of course, was probably deadly afraid. He eventually came to us, and it took a very long time to figure out what was going on with him. This story just repeated itself, I'm sorry to say, and this time, we got him registered in Philadelphia. We got him on the waiting list for a group home, but they're waiting lists, long waiting lists. So he was sent to a boarding home with 24-hour supervision, eloped, and was subsequently beaten up pretty severely by somebody in the community and ended up missing for several days and back at Temple Hospital. So again, if maybe a community alert could have been issued, somebody could have recognized this person and this could have been avoided. So in both of these cases, I just described, an alert that went out not only to the police, but also the public, especially the public may have assisted in these men being possibly located much earlier than they were. Additionally, hopefully, both men could have been hospitalized or returned to their community agencies or families instead of being arrested. As you know, arrest and jail times can be extremely frightening and detrimental to anyone experiencing not only acute mental health issues, but also intellectual disabilities or dementia when individuals don't know what's actually happening to them. It's also unclear how these people even survived on the street, given their functioning level. There's obviously lots of other scenarios that I could describe to you as a psychologist, but this probably won't make my point. I am thankful that the system also has some excellent care and support for people that is needed, but many, many more people are on waiting lists for services, live with overburdened families, and even when they are in 24-hour residential settings, elopements and mistakes can happen. For these situations, we need a service system that quickly and safely disseminates individuals' information, both to the police and the public, so that they can be located and safely returned without incurring additional trauma and/or harm. I would like to thank you very much for your time and attention.
Well, thank you. Thank you for what you do.
Well, I think I've got the shortest chair. You have the shortest chair. But I'll try.
I thought there was a hole there.
I'm getting short, but not too short. Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Audrey Kachia and I'm co-executive director of a Philadelphia nonprofit organization called Vision for Equality. We provide advocacy, training, and monitoring services yearly to hundreds of people with intellectual disabilities and autism and their families who live in the city of Philadelphia. We hold contracts with the city's Department of Behavioral Health and Intellectual Disability Services and the Pennsylvania Department of Human Services Office of Developmental Programs to provide these services. I'd like to begin by first thanking the members of council for holding this hearing today, and especially Councilman O'Brien, for proposing this ordinance regarding amending Title 21 of the Philadelphia Code entitled "miscellaneous" that will establish a policy of posting all missing and endangered persons' alerts on city websites and social sites. I believe this amendment to Title 21 will greatly expedite efforts to recover vulnerable individuals who go missing before they are put in harm's way and hopefully bring them home safely. We urge city council to support this important amendment. We believe this will enhance and aid in the search and recovery of missing persons who are at risk due to the harm of their disability or mental impairment. Our organization works closely with individuals with disabilities and their families, and we know firsthand just how frightening it can be when a person with intellectual disabilities or autism goes missing. Wandering or elopement is the tendency of an individual to try and leave the safety of a responsible person's care or a safe area. This behavior is considered common in short-lived children, but for those with mental impairments of other kind, it may persist or reemerge in adulthood. With anyone with intellectual or mental challenges of social and communication skills and safety awareness, this can be a serious concern. Wandering or elopement is an extremely dangerous behavior. Studies have shown individuals with autism and those with more significant intellectual disabilities, dementia or Alzheimer's disease, may be more likely to elope, and it can have dangerous consequences for them, given their vulnerability. It can end up in encounters that are life-threatening, or in some cases, even deadly. These individuals go missing for a variety of reasons. They may wander off from home and become lost. They may become disoriented for some reason due to their mental or cognitive impairment or bored and walk away from staff out in the community. They may get separated from caregivers in a crowd, or at an event, or during a disaster. This is very problematic because, due to their disability, they often do not know their name, address, or phone number, and have challenges in self-awareness and in recognizing dangerous situations. So they wander from safe settings, often with tragic consequences. Roughly half or 48% of people with autism spectrum disorder or intellectual disability have challenges understanding safety issues. They often have a general inability to think, act, or communicate, or gain assistance from those if they are in trouble. They may not just become separated or walk away from a caregiver, but also be missing for hours. One large study on elopement found that about half of the individuals with autism who elope have had at least one instance in which they were missing long enough to cause their caregivers to be concerned about their well-being and safety. In particular, individuals who go missing may be at increased risk for a traffic injury or a drowning event, or be harmed by others. According to the Alzheimer's Association, vulnerable individuals who go missing, if not found within 24 hours, nearly 50% of them will be put at risk of serious illness, injury, or death. This can occur from exposure to the elements, lack of food or hydration. There is no question wandering or elopement is a critical issue that puts vulnerable people in harm's way. We in Philadelphia are no strangers to horrific outcomes when vulnerable people go missing. As Councilman O'Brien has shared with you, this is someone I will never forget. Her name is Christina. On March 6th of this past year, on a freezing cold night, this young woman called Christina wandered off from a paid caregiver who was busy looking at jewelry in Macy's in Center City, Philadelphia. Christina had severe autism, was nonverbal, had little to no coping skills. A search was undertaken, and it was reported to the police, but for Christina, it was already too late. The call was just to the police, and Christina could not be located by them. Her body was finally found early the next morning, half naked, laying between two parked cars at 57th and Master. We knew Christina and her mother, and the following morning, one of our staff received the tragic call from her mother telling us of her loss. Woman's anguish on the phone call to us to tell us was beyond any description I can tell any of you. A few years ago, also a young man with intellectual disabilities who was from Philadelphia wandered away from his family's home and sadly was found on the train tracks dead. Several times a year in Philadelphia, people with intellectual disabilities, autism, or mental illness elope from day programs or group homes. Sometimes it's broadcasted, but often not. In most of those situations, thank God, the person was returned safely, but it is not always the case. This past fall, an elderly gentleman with signs of dementia wandered away from a restaurant in northeast Philadelphia area and later was found dead. Each year, we hear several stories of elderly individuals as well, wandering off from their family's home or nursing home, sometimes again with tragic results. These type of incidents can happen quickly, even with great oversight and supervision. My husband and I were on vacation this last summer with our daughter who has intellectual disabilities. Our daughter cannot speak, she has no fear of strangers or traffic. The three of us were shopping for food at a grocery store. She was by our side. In just a flash, as we were putting the food on the conveyor belt, she disappeared. I started running through the store looking for her through each aisle. I could not find her. She's quite short, obviously like her mother. But calling out to her made no sense, so she could not reply. My heart began to race, and I tried desperately to figure out where she might go. After not seeing her anywhere, I decided to quickly rush outside for fear she left the store and she might walk into traffic, and thank God, I found her sitting on a bench. Needless to say, the incident was upsetting, even though the outcome was good. So yes, wandering or elopement can happen quickly, even with constant supervision, and when it does, a quick response and recovery is imperative. We're beginning to see a patchwork of sophisticated alert systems to recover vulnerable missing adults developing throughout the United States. There is even a present national effort and a bill introduced in Congress by Senator Schumer of New York to help provide funding for law enforcement agencies to enhance alert systems throughout the country. These systems administered at the state and local levels are intended to alert law enforcement entities, and in some cases, equally important to the general public, that adults with cognitive impairment or other disabilities are missing and may need assistance. This would alert everyone that an individual at high risk and missing is unable to make their way home or to a safe place. If this more sophisticated approach had been in place for Christina, perhaps she would not have lost her life. Members of council, we need you to enhance our present system and pass this proposed amendment so our most vulnerable citizens in Philadelphia are protected. This may enable us to rest assured that through the cooperative efforts of the Pennsylvania State Police Alert System, our local law enforcement agencies, and the City of Philadelphia Alert System websites and social websites, people who are diagnosed with mental or cognitive impairments, developmental disabilities, or dementia are quickly identified when missing and found. This type of cooperative effort will allow for a rapid dissemination and response and hopefully, a positive outcome, a safe return for those who are vulnerable and in need of our protection. I thank you again for your time and consideration.
Thank you so much for your efforts and consistency, particularly with your children, but others, and caring for them. Chair also recognizes that Councilman Squillen has joined us and recognizes Councilman Heenan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I want to thank the sponsor for using technology and put to such good public use to actually make a difference. So thank you all for coming here and testifying, and those personal stories are indisputable. I mean, people can't, you know, argue the personal reality of time and people's lives. So I think this is incredibly important. My question is for Lieutenant. Thank you for being here. Lieutenant Stanford, just from a city's, what can we expect from the city? Where could we expect the MEPAS to be posted, websites? Would it be the MDO or OEM, Police Department? Is it something that we still need to kind of flesh out and try to figure out?
Well, one, we would post it on our website, philippolice.com. We also work in coordination with OEM and other city agencies, so we would coordinate with them to have it on their website as well. We currently release missing persons on our website as of now, in terms of, we actually have a separate category for it on the website. So usually, when you go to the website, we'll have one category, blogs of all crime information, but we've dedicated a separate category so that it doesn't get lost in the minutia of everything else. It has its own category on our website where missing persons are posted, and that flow is constantly there, as well as we have a dedicated Twitter account for missing persons. And so that information will be flushed there, and the same thing would apply with this system.
But I think, you know, and it's great to hear, because I think the technology that you're using as a tool, Twitter, Facebook, and anonymous tips and crime postings, has been enormously successful here in the city of Philadelphia. Because, I mean, it is a different tool. People are communicating, people are the eyes and ears out on the street, so I'm glad to hear that. So we have an infrastructure and a system that's already in place.
Absolutely.
Great, thank you very much.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you, Councilman. Are there any other questions from any other members of the panel? Is anyone else here to testify?
First, I just want to thank the administration for their support on this proposal. And one of the visions that I brought to city council, and I want to express my gratitude to my colleagues, because they really are in the world of what we can do rather than look at all the reasons why we can't do something. And this is critically important. A vision that I share with many people in the disability community is to make Philadelphia the first disability-friendly city on the planet, and that's within our grasp, but it starts by building off a platform that you've embraced and that you understand and want to make available. And off of that platform, it allows everybody to use their own personal social media. So the network is just beyond anything we can imagine, and it certainly will respond to the anxiety that parents, caregivers, and family members and friends have in these desperate situations. But it also recognizes that our guys are odd. They're not criminal. But often, what they do when they're in public is, if they, in an instance where a police officer may go down a street and one of our guys looks remarkably similar to the suspect they're looking for, and then that individual runs away, and when apprehended by the police, they'll look away, and the police officer doesn't know. That's not a sign of disrespect, that's how they process. They look away so that they can hear the communication and try to process that, because they have thousands of things coming at them at any given moment. When they also have issues where they imitate mythological figures or someone that they see in a movie. So if they're out there and they have eloped, which they have great tendency to do, and they start imitating that mythical figure, then the people on the playground, or in the store, or people walking down the street with small children may see this as an individual who's threatening to them. And as, Doctor, as you pointed out in your testimony, when they're incarcerated, they're away from their families, and this also enables us to find those people and rescue them before they're interned for an extended period of time. And God knows, our individuals regress for any number of reasons, but being incarcerated, and, Doctor, at some point, I'd like you to extrapolate on the consequences of being incarcerated, because I think those experiences are more severe for our individuals than for someone else that may be experiencing that. But this is a wonderful opportunity for us to understand individuals that are different, that are among us. And I always say, individuals with disabilities and those suffering from Alzheimer's, they're not the problem. We're the problem. We are the problem, because we don't understand who these individuals are. So we have tools now that we can train employers, we can train police, we can train probation and parole, and judges, and others that interact with these individuals, and it builds a community awareness, so that if someone is decompensating, and they happen to be in a Wawa, or a Dunkin' Donuts, or in a Macy's, that people are more aware and can find ways of offering assistance or find someone who is an authority figure and bring that individual to someone's attention, or just make them safe until the family member is able to be contacted. But I just have a couple of questions for you, Lieutenant, and they really get to very basic things. How quickly can you coordinate with other agencies, and what criteria would you use in differentiating whether you would post an alert or not?
Well, actually, right now, in terms of, like I said, our department has been committed to this process of posting missing persons. Again, in terms of, the moment that police officers respond to that initial incident and they begin that investigative process with our investigative bureau, we're then notified. It would be within, I would say, moments that we can communicate with other agencies, because again, that's something that's already in place now, and we do that when we have any type of catastrophic events or situations that happen within the city. So that structure is already in place. It's just a matter of bringing everybody up to speed, letting them know that this will be another component of what we do now, and getting that information out. But typically, as of right now, we feel as though every missing person is important to that family member. So that's why we've dedicated that missing persons column. So, I mean, we have a criteria in terms of eight individual categories at which folks can fall into based on the individual situations, but as of right now, it's important to us, we put that information out on all missing persons. Because, I mean, the way I look at it is, if we get that information, that's important to that family, and it doesn't cost us anything other than the manpower, if you will, in terms of typing it up and putting that information out. But in terms of cost, it doesn't cost us anything to put that information out there. I'd much rather put the information out and have that person found within an hour or so, and even before it really reaches many people. I'd much rather put that information out as opposed to not putting that information out and then something happens. So, and some of the situations that have been already described. So we're dedicated to that process of putting out all missing persons. We receive that information, we're posting that information out, and some of them don't fall into the categories. It may be a person that went out for the night and stayed out and didn't notify family. We've actually had that happen. And, you know, again, I'd much rather put that out there than to not and have something tragic happen.
Well, I want to thank you, Lieutenant, and I want to thank the administration for again responding positively. I'm a pathological optimist by nature. And again, one of the things that I always ask people when you bring up a proposal, and they'll instantly recite all the reasons why they can't do it, and the real question is, well then, what are you for? And in this case, it's not why you can't do something, but let's look at the reasons we can, and you've launched a wonderfully positive conversation, and I thank you for that. And, Doctor, would you just like to comment on the clinical aspects of when someone goes missing and finds themselves in the criminal justice system?
It sort of depends on what is going on with the person. I think one of the biggest problems for people with mental health issues is that in a criminal justice setting, obviously, there's a lot of stress. You have to follow a lot of structure and rules. People might have difficulties comprehending what those structures and rules are, if they even realize where they are, especially somebody with dysorganization. So they often commit infractions in jail settings and may end up in isolation, which of course is also extremely detrimental. You also can't quote-unquote "force Medicaid" in a jail setting. You have to be in an inpatient hospital setting for this, so if somebody has decompensated because of not having access to their medications, that may make the person way, way worse. And it sometimes, as in that situation I described to you, the person had to be on medications and in treatment and all this kind of stuff for months before they were able to kind of resemble some of their baseline functioning before we were able to return them to Philadelphia. Somebody with intellectual disabilities might have the same problems following along in a setting like this. The individual that I described to you, who thought he was a fictional character, when he was in our hospital, didn't realize he was in a hospital either. He thought he was in a pretty interesting fictional setting that I would take walks in with him on a daily basis, but I think he would have not really understood. He knows kind of what the police is, but clearly is afraid of the police and would have not known what to do. And if those folks aren't approached, so he can get very defensive and aggressive if approached in a confrontational manner, you can super easily de-escalate this person with a little bit of humor and sort of like a very soft approach. And I don't really fault officers here. As we know, it's a matter of, as you said, public education of what you're seeing and dealing with, and sometimes we just don't understand, and people in the community are afraid sometimes, and I understand that, too. If I didn't have that training, I think I might be a little floor, too, if somebody approached me in a playground claiming they were somebody that was trying to eat me and yelling at me aggressively. So it's a matter of education on all levels, police, jails, the public.
Thank you. I also am given to tell wonderful stories, and sometimes too many, but in this instance, a lot of the stories that I do know, Dee is very much aware of them, and because of privacy issues, I won't elaborate, but there's numerous ones that come to mind. And I'll leave that to Dee, so that she can elaborate and tell the stories that give a face to this and a real passion for why we have to do it. But I will suggest that these individuals, when they are incarcerated, they'll do things like drink shampoo because they know they're in a desperate situation. But Dee, has there, again, you've given wonderful examples. Unfortunately, they've had tragic results, but have you, do you have any hard data on how often this happens? And perhaps this cries out for some of our epidemiologists to look at this, so that they can analyze the, whatever data we have. And it's been my experience that they come up with some other wonderful remedies on how to tie some of these conversations together. Do you have any data?
Just what I spoke to in terms of the Alzheimer's Association has done, and so has some of the autism associations across the country. So, you know, there's a pretty high risk of elopement and wandering away. It comes to mind that after this happened, I spoke to Estelle Richmond, who happens to be a dear friend of both you and myself, and she suggested, too, that we ought to reach out, like to the groups that are out in the community in the evening looking for the homeless and things like that. If they had those alerts, they would also take into consideration if they come across somebody who may seem to be having a problem. So, you know, I think a lot of times, we're not even getting all the information, because often if somebody wanders away from a group home, they quietly try to find the person without contacting the police. They just put out an alert in their own organization and send people out on the street. So I'm not sure we have any real inclination, how many people are really doing this. We just know that there are many, many people, if they cannot speak, if they have autism, you know, if they don't understand what's going on, they are really at grave risk in the community. First of all, as many people in the community don't understand them either when they run into someone with a disability. And when the person becomes upset, certainly, an officer may not realize what's going on either at the time, so.
Thank you. Your testimony has been compelling, informative, and instructive, and I want to thank you for taking the time to be here. And I want to thank my colleagues for taking this important issue up.
Thank you so much. Are there, Councilman Heenan?
Oh, I'm fine, thank you.
Are there any other questions for this panel? Councilwoman Blackwell.
Again, I keep mentioning, and I want to mention again Lieutenant Walker. I'll try not to call him tonight at midnight. And is there anything special that you want to add due to all the stories and reasons we call you?
Again, I've heard a lot of these stories, a couple of the Councilman O'Brien, two of those jobs I was involved with, Christina, I was involved in that job. Obviously, it was a horrible situation, but there's nothing more difficult for us as investigators when you get a job like that. You talk about your personal, I can remember in 2009, being at Macy's with my mother for the show. She was early senility, and I'm looking at ties like an idiot that I am and not paying attention, she walks off. And it's that feeling you get in your stomach that you say to yourself, and she's in a store, she's contained, and you're saying to yourself, oh my God, what am I going to do? And in a short time. So when we get these cases, investigators, as Councilman Blackwell spoke of, the five-year-old who was abducted from Bryant was my case, there's nothing that we don't do to find these people as soon as possible. And with the recent events with autistic child and these elderly people with Alzheimer's, and the Councilman and I talk all the time, it's just frustrating, because we did have an Alzheimer's person who did wander off in the winter, this past winter, and was found dead, unfortunately, because we couldn't find her quick enough. These cases, and everything John Stanford and I talk about all the time, trying to get these early alerts out and getting people involved and engaged, and trying to find programs to assist these people is challenging for all of us, but a good doctor and the people who are in this industry pushing through this and fighting the fight, I mean, keep it up, because it's definitely appreciated by us, and we need more resources like this to help us do our job and make things better out there for everybody.
Thank you, Councilwoman, and I can't thank you enough for what you do. You know, until you have that moment, you don't understand the panic, and then the fact that there are systems in place at your worst moment to be able to help you to hopefully have a good outcome. And we appreciate what the author of this legislation is doing to help that cause. So are there any other questions for these witnesses? Seeing none, this concludes our public hearing. We will now open our public meeting. And I will call upon Councilman Heenan for a motion to amend Bill Number 15009.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move that the amendment to Bill Number 15009 be adopted.
Second. It has been moved and properly seconded, that amendment to Bill Number 15009 be adopted. All those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it. This motion carries, and the amendment to Bill Number 15009 has been adopted. The chair will now recognize again, Councilman Heenan, for a motion on Bill Number 15009 as amended.
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman. I move that Bill Number 15009, as amended, be reported at a committee with a favorable recommendation, and further move that the rules of counsel be suspended to permit first reading of this bill in our next council session.
It has been moved and properly seconded, that Bill Number 15009, as amended, be reported from this committee with a favorable recommendation, and further move that the rules of counsel be suspended to permit first reading of this bill at our next session of council. All those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it. This motion carries on Bill Number 15009, as amended, be reported from this committee with a favorable recommendation with a request that the rules of counsel be suspended to permit first reading at our next session of council. This concludes our public meeting. Thank you.